Alright, sir, we are live. We're live, so we're gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna have a invocation and a pledge, and we're gonna move forward with the workshop. Let's stand. God, I wanna thank you for staff and working so hard to get this technical language prepared for us tonight, and may we give it its due time and make good decisions about it. God, I thank you for the things that you have given to us through this town. Continue to pray for those that lost things in the fire, and that they will be able to get moving quickly and get back in business. And, oh, Lord, just guide our thoughts in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No public comment? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, no consent agenda, and Phillip, we'll hand it over to you to get us started on this material.
Alright, very good. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen, and we'll make sure everybody can see that as well. Alright, can everybody see what I got on the screen now as well?
Yes.
Alright, very good. So... Can still see it?
Yes.
Alright, so, I apologize, I couldn't be here in person with you today, but we're giving this virtual presentation a shot. We had, for the downtown master plan, the LCI, a lot of recommendations for different changes that we've made to the ordinance. These changes were made or suggested very early on when we started just looking at downtown planning and things like that, and it resulted in a couple of changes to the ordinance already, namely, the town center mixed-use zoning classification. So, that's what came out of a lot of different types of studies before the LCI, such as the 2018 zoning assessment and that UGA study that happened. So, here we have recommended changes to the Town Center Architectural Design Guidelines. And what this section of the ordinance really serves as is an overlay district. So, I sat down with Planning Commission for a workshop meeting with them, wanted to do the same with you. A lot of technical language, and it's a lot of technical items, but it really just covers the whole swath of downtown, and just has an added layer of regulation that kind of supersedes what happens downtown in terms of quality growth and things like that. It's very much like our overlay for Highway 74. So, I'm gonna move in. I did a little presentation here.
Phillip, I can't get the control bar at the bottom of the screen to go away. Can you, do you know how I can do that? You're talking about the one with the red hang-up? Yeah. Move your cursor out of the screen, like, over to the right, and click. See if that does it for you. And then, just stop moving it, like, give it some, and, there it goes.
There we go. Alright.
Can't play golf, but he knows how to figure that out.
Mr. Mayor, you have become our new IT design team.
There you go. That is the first and last time I will ever teach Brandon something about that.
Alright, so, kind of going through again, just real quick, overlay district is a district established by an ordinance and is superimposed over another area. One of the first changes that I'm recommending we change, this ordinance section to, it's section 113-17, I believe, is to retitle it from Town Center Architectural Design Guidelines to just simply Town Center Overlay, because I believe that it's just a little bit more than just architectural guidelines. And it would encompass the area that is on our future development map, which is the town center area and the in-town residential character area. So, the main areas that I wanted to tackle in the overlay were parking, streets and sidewalks, and then site and setback standards, and then, of course, architecture, which is already in there. And then, I had this discussion with Planning Commission, so in each one of those four sections, I've kind of divvied it out into individual considerations. And I have a redlined ordinance that we'll get into, but this is just a highlight of the different areas. So, the top left square is in regards to parking. So, some of the new things that we've written in there are to allow on-street parking, to perhaps talk about a parking bank, to have bicycle and golf cart parking requirements, and then to have curb cuts approved by the town engineer, so to have a little extra oversight on curb cuts onto specifically Sonora and Commerce Drive. But I don't wanna get into everything, but I did wanna kind of pause right there and talk about, or answer any questions that y'all have about these particular areas of focus for it, and if you had any questions about parking portion of it thus far.
Can you explain to me, at least, I don't know, parking bank option?
Yes. So, we've changed already some parking requirements downtown. We've allowed for what are known as shared parking agreements, and then we've also allowed for reduction, a percentage reduction of parking requirements for properties that are within a certain proximity of pre-existing public parking. I believe it's, I think it's like a 20% reduction if you're within, I think, 800 feet of a public parking facility. So, a parking bank is something that I've seen utilized in a lot of other communities. It's something that I think could be helpful for us here in the town, because what it allows owners to do is if there are onsite parking requirements, then they're required to put in 20 spaces for our ordinance. And they don't have room for 20 spaces, or they want to be able to have more flexibility on their property because it's a very small property, because we have a lot of small properties in downtown, like it's a quarter acre lot or smaller, and they're just not able to put 20 parking spaces on their property. What that, what this parking bank option allows is for the owner, the town come up with basically kind of a fixed cost of what a parking space costs to construct. The owner would then donate money, or pay money into the parking bank to the town, similar to how we do with the tree bank. In fact, it's the exact same type of model. If you don't have enough landscaping, or you don't have enough room to be able to replant the tree density that we require, you have to put money into the tree bank so that the tree, the town can then plant those trees elsewhere in the town. A parking bank would operate the same way. If you don't want those parking spaces on your property, they would then be put into a parking bank for the town to be able to provide public parking elsewhere. We thought that this might be a good solution, because there are a couple of places in, on public property across the town where we could construct additional public parking or improve parking, and this parking bank would allow us to have a funding source outside of taxes to be able to make that happen, while also giving property owners flexibility on their own lot. So, that's what a parking bank is. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Oh, I think that was great. Thank you.
I think with our challenges with parking, we're gonna have to be willing to explore as many, many creative ways of getting cars in as possible.
Yeah, yeah. That's certainly gonna be a challenge, or at least it's gonna be something that we have to, we have to plan for. So, if we want added activity downtown, especially on lots that are very, very small and can't actually meet the parking requirement, this allows that flexibility to be able to have, you know, added, added activity downtown in terms of development and flexibility for the owner, but then also, of course, room for parking. So, I actually don't have any language drafted up for that. That's something that I did wanna consult you guys on, to see if that's something you're interested in. If it is, that would actually be an amendment to the parking ordinance. I don't know if I'd put it in the Town Center Overlay, but I'd put it in the parking ordinance and make that type of change.
I would be in favor of you doing that.
Okay, very good. I'm probably gonna take some notes here, so I apologize if I go quiet for just a minute. Okay, so, under streets and sidewalks, we added some language about discouraging cul-de-sacs, so any new development that comes in. One of the biggest things that we are concerned about for in-town residential and town center character area development is traffic management. And, traffic management is best handled with a street grid, so not cul-de-sacking streets and then concentrating all of that traffic into one or two intersections, but allowing traffic dispersion, and allowing people to kind of go in the direction that they're looking to ultimately go, as opposed to getting routed to a single point and then going from there. Because that could kind of create perceived traffic issues, and the streets that become created are not really part of a network or a grid, they're just feeding into individual intersections that will then have to, you know, expend a lot of dollars to improve later on down the road. So, we've added in provisions for development to just, to basically discourage cul-de-sacs unless they're absolutely necessary. And then, we've talked about conforming to street-type examples. So, downtown, we're looking at greater walkability. Greater walkability and, you know, greater mobility for people not in a car means a little bit different street design. So, it means having sidewalks, having multi-use trails, and having adequate spacing, adding street trees, different things like that. The LCI created some street typologies, is what they call them, basically just visual examples, cross-sections of streets and street designs that are most appropriate for downtown. So, we would ask any new developer, that if they come in and they build streets, to build them as close to that standard as possible. And so, that's kind of how we, that's what we've kind of talked about a little bit in terms of streets and sidewalk design. And we'll get into that in the redline ordinance as well. But any questions about that?
No, thank you.
Okay. And then, going into site and setback standards, so, down here, one of the big things that we wanted to do was, one of the big things identified in the LCI, was looking at the C1 downtown commercial zoning district, and looking at how it can be more productive, and how we can provide property owners that are already zoned that zoning classification greater flexibility. Most, if not all, of our downtown business owners are zoned C1 downtown commercial, and most of them are also on what we call legacy lots, so they're smaller lots, and they're all non-conforming, basically. Their buildings are all within setbacks or what have you, because the standards for C1 are more for like a highway commercial, large lot property. So, one of the things that we're looking to do is reduce the setback standards for C1 within the Town Center District, so only within downtown. C1 would have different development standards. There would be a reduced acreage requirement, reduced setbacks, allow for a little bit more flexible building height. And so, the building height flexibility would just come in the form of if they wanted to do architectural accents, they're not stories, so it'd be limited to build to three stories, but they could perhaps go beyond 35 feet to maybe 40 or 45 if they wanted a taller first or second story. Sometimes, people want high ceilings, so maybe a lot of ground floor, and that kind of bumps the overall height up. So, we've talked about changing some of those things, and we'll get into that as well. The other two areas that we looked at were screening exterior storage and requiring dumpster pad enclosures. So, again, just kind of in keeping with a little bit of a higher standard downtown, exterior storage, there was a lot of discussion about just prohibiting exterior storage. I didn't, I didn't think that that was particularly helpful to existing businesses, because a lot of them do have exterior storage. But, screening requirements, I thought, was probably a more appropriate, a more appropriate measure for downtown. So, as long as they are behind either a really well landscaped area, like an opaque landscape area such as Leland Cypress Street, or if they're behind an opaque fence, you know, property owners could continue to have exterior storage, but it would be screened from view so that the visual aesthetic downtown is just kept to a little higher standard. We don't really have a lot of businesses that have a lot of exterior storage anyway, and given the zoning, exterior storage lends itself a little bit more to like heavy commercial, light industrial. Downtown's gonna be lighter commercial, so I don't see a lot of that happening in the future regardless, but it's just one of those things that we wanted to include. The same with dumpster pad enclosures, so dumpsters should be screened as well. So, those were some of the building and architecture standards, or I mean, site and setback standards. Before I move on from that, are there any questions about that kind of overview?
Phillip, what is the maximum height that anybody can put a build, you know, put a building to here in our town?
It's regulated by the zoning district, so, but, but, most, in most places in the town, it's 35 or 40 feet. There are some, some small exceptions to that. We had some exceptions for movie media production facilities. They could get up to a height of 65 feet if they met additional setback and zoning requirements, but that's, and then there are other exceptions like grain silos and different things like that.
Phillip, we're gonna see this a little bit later in the redlining, but it's mentioned here, on required dumpster pad enclosures, why is that even debatable? I mean, why would we, why would we want dumpsters exposed?
Well, dumpster pad enclosures, it's, one of the things that we were looking at with this ordinance is just kind of, is looking at how we can improve downtown and also continue to assist business owners and give them greater flexibility and things like that. Requiring dumpster pad enclosures is typically an added cost on a business owner, but, of course, seeing dumpsters is a negative aesthetic, you know, quality, especially in an area where we have a little bit of a higher standard. So, the only reason that you would not require a dumpster pad enclosure is to basically tell that business owner that it's, they don't have to have that added cost. But it is one of those costs that we're saying is worth it for the aesthetic value of downtown, is the argument. What we certainly don't want to happen is dumpsters being located in the front of the building, or just, you know, dropped in a very visible location. So, you can, you can, you cannot require dumpster pad enclosures and then say it has to not be visible from the right-of-way. There are different ways to address it.
Alright.
So, moving into building and architecture standards, we talked about regulating facade materials, colors, architectural features such as porches, garage doors, and then roof, roof materials. So, those were the big areas that we focused on with architecture. And then I can move into the, I can move into the redline ordinance, if that works.
In regards to the roofing material...
Yeah.
I, I, my only thought was, is that I think that all commercial buildings should not be allowed to put up a tin roof or a metal roof. One of the issues that the fire department did have with our recent situation was they couldn't get to the fire because the steel roof was there and the water wouldn't penetrate it. So, if there's a possibility that we could add any commercial buildings, they'd have to have, you know, a sheet, excuse me, shingled roof, or some other materials.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. Well, I'll, I'll show the area where we've addressed roofing materials, and we can kind of make that change there.
Okay, thank you.
Planning, this is real quick, Planning Commission, these were their main, big comments coming out of the workshop that I did with them. They would like to put in a provision to have them issue certificates of appropriateness for architectural facade. This would come with a site plan approval, so right now, there is no, no architectural approval outside of just administrative approval for buildings going into the downtown area. They said they thought it would be wise to have them be the approving body for architecture to be, to make sure that it met the ordinance requirement. We, the, another discussion was to have an architectural review board, which is quite a, quite a substantial, you know, change in terms of creating something like that, but it certainly, and it's usually something that's done in slightly larger cities with a little bit more activity. I think that Planning Commission taking on this duty would not overburden them, but that was something that they had suggested. They also suggested that we not limit the number of materials used in architecture. So, in the previous set of the ordinance, it said that there could be no more than two architectural materials allowed in the construction of the building. That seemed too limiting to them. They said that, you know, the owner should have the flexibility of choosing a variety of materials. And then they also added, wanted to add a clause regarding maintenance of the facades of buildings. So, if paint is chipping, or if there's a serious maintenance issue, that we should have a, we should have a higher standard, or some kind of clause in the ordinance that addresses maintenance. They, they also wanted to mention screening solar panels on roofs. So, we have requirements for screening rooftop equipment. They wanted rooftop equipment to specifically include solar panels. And then, they talked about street-facing garage doors should be behind principal structures and houses. So, in an effort to not make garage doors a primary architectural feature, they should be recessed behind the building, or they should, garages should not be facing the street. So, we'll get into some of that as well. Okay, so, before I dive into anything, are there any questions thus far?
I think we're good, Phillip.
Okay. So, the Town Center Architectural Design Considerations, you can see the first thing that we wanted to change was retitling it Town Center District Overlay. There were a couple of different purposes, purpose and intent changes that we made, just talking about to emphasize compatibility of, you know, buildings and aesthetics, to talk about providing, providing parking properly, preserve the efficient use of roads, and a grid pattern. So, we just kind of added some, some extra purpose and intent items in here to just kind of describe what we're trying to achieve better. The next item that we changed was going into facade requirements, so, down here, the ordinance previously listed brick, brick veneer, stone, natural wood, and/or cement-based wood siding. So, it specifically mentioned architectural materials that were to be required, to be used in the facade of buildings downtown. I have here on F, exterior materials, this was another, another means of regulating materials. Exterior materials shall be natural in appearance with preference given to brick. Such materials shall be wood, wood siding, stone, stucco, or contemporary materials in details closely replicating such materials. So, this was an alternative to listing, you know, A, B, C, and D, brick, brick veneer, stone, natural wood. Planning Commission seemed to have a preference to describing preferred building materials in this way, because it was more flexible. It didn't say you have to use brick, brick veneer, or stone. It's saying, we have a preference for those materials, but it has to overall look natural, and it has to try and replicate traditional materials. This is a little bit more flexible. I don't know what your thoughts are on changing the wording to be more like what we have here in F, as opposed to what's listed here, A through E.
I think F kind of covers it all, doesn't it?
Yes, it covers all of those other items, but it also allows for something outside of that bound. So, it allows for another type of contemporary material that is not listed.
But is, is that, is that gonna pull in something like vinyl siding?
I don't, I don't think that it would. We would, we would, we would still have the ability to approve architectural facades, right? So, if Planning Commission gave a certificate of appropriateness, we have listed here preferences to brick, wood, wood siding. If somebody suggested that, you know, the broadside of a building be made of vinyl that is meant to look like wood, and it was a very poor imitation, then Planning Commission at that point would say, that's really not meeting, that's not really meeting the architectural requirements. They would probably ask for some different type of material. It would allow them to use some other material that's unknown to us, because architectural facades and materials are changing all the time. So, there may be something that is really appropriate, something that looks really good, but was just not, it wasn't listed. One of those that I've seen pop up a lot is Board and Batten, is a very common, you know, new style for architectural facade, and it's typically not listed anywhere in architectural requirements, but it looks very good. And so, I've seen a lot of, seen a lot of Planning Commissions and councils, you know, give exception to that, and they say, okay, well, we like that, and we'll have to change our ordinance to meet it. This just allows us to not have to change the ordinance and approve it, and allow that flex just on the onset.
I can express my opinion, I'll ask members of council to do the same. I appreciate the intent of that, and I would support it, but I would make sure that we are closely guarding ourselves from it, from it, you know, being a slippery slope the other direction, you know? You know, a builder just comes in and just says, well, yeah, I, I use the contemporary material that closely replicates traditional materials.
Maybe we should take that out. I don't like that either.
Well, I think, what he's saying is, as, as materials evolve and get better, we want to allow for those to be used, and, and I get that. I appreciate that. But, there has to be somebody that's saying, okay, that's there for, to make things better, not to allow you to go cheaper. And, so, I don't, I don't know how you, you protect yourself in that sentence from adverse impact.
Would it be, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Phillip.
Yeah, I, I could say that we could put that there are certain approved building materials. Any other materials proposed to be used would have to be approved by Planning Commission on a case-by-case basis during, you know, the issuance of that certificate of appropriateness. So, we could, we could have, you know, the listed materials that we think are most appropriate, and then, or, and say, you know, these are the ones that are approved. If you want anything else, it's gonna have to be part of the architectural approval on a case-by-case basis by Planning Commission.
Alright, we're getting, we're getting raised eyebrows from legal counsel on, on the case-by-case basis language? What, what language would you recommend that we achieve what we're trying to achieve?
Well, anytime you provide discretion in the area of something like this, you wind up with unforeseen consequences that you have a difficult time defending. Anytime you step away from the objective, which is use... Anytime you step away from the objective, which is use wood, stone, brick, and go to the subjective or materials which resemble, once you use those type words, you're opening the door for exactly what you're talking about. I've got, uh, a client that basically said, we don't want vinyl on exterior, and they put that in their ordinance. I told him the risk is you have a problem prohibiting a material, but if you feel that strongly about it and you wanna put the word out there, we don't want vinyl on the exterior, so be it. That's what they did. If you don't want vinyl, say you don't want vinyl. And I understand what you're trying to do is you're trying to pick up those types of materials that would be acceptable, but without telling someone objectively what's acceptable and to use your discretion after the fact creates some problems.
So your suggestion would in fact be remove that, remove that language?
I would say list what's acceptable to you. And if something comes on the market that's new, that you find acceptable, add it to your list. That's what I would say.
All right.
You wanna add board and batten then after stucco and then just stop instead of leaving it open at the end?
I don't know what board and batten is, so I'd have to trust you all for, I probably, if you showed it to me and say, I'd probably say, oh, so that's board and batten. I don't know.
Uh, I've seen it, but I don't know how to describe it. It's, uh...
You sell it?
No.
Question, sir?
We don't sell any building materials.
So we have some ordinances that refer to a, like a fee schedule, that, you know, the ordinance refers to a fee schedule. It's a separate document. To prevent us from having to change the ordinance every time a new material comes out or we're dealing with that, could we have this ordinance refer to a separate, like a list of approved facade materials? And then council just changes that list?
I guess you could, but the reason you have that in place for your fee schedule is because fee schedules typically change fairly regularly over time. Exterior materials, you're gonna have changes, not like you would a fee schedule though. I don't, and, and if a new material comes on the market, you may wanna weigh in on whether or not, hey, let's add that to our list. You may not wanna add that to your list.
All right. Do you have enough feedback from us to, I mean, we can't vote on anything, so do you have enough feedback from us?
No, I think I do. So I, I, I'm listing the objective materials that we want. So we want brick. Brick veneer is basically what we have in our, on the town hall right now. It's not, it's not a full brick wall. It's a, it's a thin brick. So brick, brick veneer, stone, natural wood, and/or cement-based wood siding such as hardy plank. Is there any other material that is, uh, that you believe is appropriate? Is stucco an appropriate material for downtown? Are we supportive of that? Um, are we not supportive of one of the other ones that are listed?
I don't like stucco.
I'm not, I'm not a big fan of st- of stucco. It has a lot of, you know, ultimately, um, time usually starts to break it down a lot faster than the other materials. But, um, I, I, I think you, what you've got at A, B, C, and D, E is, is good.
Okay. Well, I'll keep those materials then. Um, okay. And then, um, kinda moving, uh, a- anymore on facade requirements before I start moving down?
Not even at the corners?
Uh, they call it ethos, I think is what it's called.
I thought we had some stucco or stucco-type material on the corners of this building.
It is a type of stucco, but they call it ethos. I don't know what the difference is, but it's, that was what they referred to. And I asked one time, I said, isn't that stucco? And they said, no, that's not stucco. It's ethos.
All right, so there's, there's a perfect example. What if somebody comes in here and says, well, I wanna use some ethos? And we say, no, because it, it's not on that list. And they say, well, it's on your town hall.
That's the last building you'll see it on too.
Yeah, I, what this facade requirement section is actually addressing are the, uh, the main building materials. It does say that, um, not including trim or accent.
Oh, okay.
Trim and accents, I believe our building, the, the ethos is used on trim and accent portions.
Gotcha.
We would, we would, we would allow them to use, you know, some, perhaps stucco or whatever, um, as a trim or an accent around the building. Um, w- we could, you know, uh, one of the arguments is how, how much is, um, you know, how much surface area can I make a trim and an accent? And, um, I, we can, we can also put in a provision that says that the buildings must be at least eighty percent, you know, this material, uh, similar to how we've done on the, uh, the corridor for Highway seventy-four. Um, we could say, you know, the buildings need to be at least eighty percent, not including trim and accent, you know, brick, brick veneer, stone.
All right, thank you. Council, y'all good? All right, let's move.
Okay. So moving on to the next page here. Um, we talk about window requirements and different things like that. Um, planning commission had some comments on, um, on, oop. There we go. Uh, planning commission had some comments on, um, building and site requirements. So, um, this, this highlighted text here about horizontal massing. They, they said that we should probably not be regulating at that level. That's their, that was their recommendation, was to remove that provision. This is just to have square, kind of like regularly sized buildings. Um, but they thought that there could be a circumstance where having, you know, a building that's not at that ratio might be necessary. And so they, they suggested removing that provision. It's a fairly common provision I've seen in a lot of communities, um, in terms of having a, an equally proportioned looking building. Uh, but it does create an added layer of review for, you know, staff and planning commission to be able to calculate what's the, what's the, the massing ratio of the building. Um, but that's something that they had commented on. Uh, but we can, you know, if you have comments on that, we can, we can address it or we can kind of move along.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Um, the next, the next item here is roofing materials. And, um, I know Mr. Billy had mentioned not having, uh, metal or, uh, any kind of tin roofs on commercial buildings. We can certainly add that as a provision. Um, but we are talking about, um, roofing materials need to be dark and they need to be in harmony with surrounding buildings. Um, um, and then we've also talked about flat roofs needing to be concealed by a parapet wall, which is a, you know, short wall that would come up and, um, screen any rooftop equipment or anything, uh, from the street. So we've talked about adding those and making sure that we have them. Um, kinda moving, moving on to the next page. We talk about where parapet should go, um, and then screening rooftop equipment, including, um, um, including solar panels. And then we then talked about here, which is the exterior storage and loading dock requirements. So, um, number three, loading docks and dumper, dumpsters shall be entirely screened from view of any public open space or sidewalk, um, with a dumpster pad enclosure. Um, it should, that dumpster pad enclosure should be made of the same material as the building. Um, and the doors and gates should be opaque. So that's where that provision is. Um, if you all are comfortable with leaving that provision in, that, you know, any new building that goes in should have, uh, a dumpster pad enclosure, we can keep that.
Buddy, object. I think it should be in there.
Okay. Um, exterior storage, um, we've just added some provisions. It needs to be screened with a room of six-foot opaque fence. Um, and that fence should be of a premium material. Chain link is not, not considered, um, an appropriate screening, um, fencing requirement for downtown. Um, and I also put in this last provision here that says exterior storage requirements should not, shall not apply to seasonal display or advertisement of goods placed out only during business hours. We have a lot of businesses that already do this. They have some of their, some of their stock outside to, to display, um, during business hours, usually only. Um, and so we're just creating, uh, uh, you know, an exception for them to be able to continue to do that. Continuing down, um, we talked about parking requirements. That's really just talking about how they should be, uh, how the parking should be designed if it's on a street. Um, but one of the main, one of the main items that we, um, we wanted to talk about were detached and attached garages. So one of the things that is commonly critiqued in new development and particularly development that's maybe on a little, you know, residential development that's a small, on a small lot, um, is that the, the garage doors are big, they're bland, and they're right up front, and they look god awful. And so one of the things that we wanted to address were garage doors. The LCI actually addressed this as well in some, some renderings and examples. That garage doors should not be a main architectural feature of any home. They should be located either turned to the side so that, you know, it's not facing the street, or it should be situated behind the, the principal structure, so behind the house. And some visual examples of that are here. So this is basically, you know, talking about how the garage should be behind the house or should be accessed by perhaps a rear alley. So this also solves an issue with parking. Typically, if it's a small, small home and it's close to the street, and let's just say you put your garage right here, then there's very little stacking for cars to be able to park, park themselves, um, in that driveway. This also gives added stacking and adequate driveway space so that cars are not parking close to the street, blocking the sidewalk, or potentially hanging into the street. Uh, we wanted to make sure we avoided that. Um, so detached garages shall have decorative doors. They should be located in inconspicuous location. Um, and the, any detached garage should also, um, um, any detached garage should also not face the street, um, unless it's behind the, the principal building. So that's what we, that's what we talked about there, because it's usually a big, big topic of discussion when these types of subdivisions come in for approval.
Ask a question about that. Are you saying you want the detached garage to be in the rear yard only, not in the side yard?
Yeah, that is correct. Is there a better way to, to describe that?
So if you had a corner lot, you need a variance for garage because you don't have a rear yard?
Um, yes, I think that would, that could, that could be appropriate, um, if you're, if you're on a corner lot, yeah. Or you could have an attached garage that was perhaps, um, situated so that it was not facing, facing the street.
I was selecting the rear versus, and the side versus behind the structure because at what point is it behind the structure? Is it behind the building line or is it behind the entire structure? And at least with the rear yard and the side yard, you have a definite line to use to say, you've got to be behind that line.
Yes, it's, it's really intended to be in the rear yard, buh, not behind the front plane of the house to be located in the side yard, but behind basically the back plane of the house to be located in the, in the actual rear yard. So I can, I can make that language much, uh, much more clear. Are there any additional questions about, uh, the garages?
No, we're good.
Okay. Um, the next section is street and sidewalk area requirements. Um, so we talk about streets, new streets and sidewalks should conform to the street examples depicted in the, um, in the downtown master plan to the highest degree possible. This is kind of, uh, I'm sure Dennis is probably looking at this like, mm, because we are referencing street standards that aren't one hundred percent, um, codified, uh, in terms of their design. Um, but we would like, mm, we would like the developer to reference our downtown master plan and the renderings that came out of that for streets and the different cross-sections. We'd like, we'd like them to try and, uh, imitate those street designs to the highest degree possible. Because that's what we're trying to do. Um, and this is just, you know, listing that and kind of showing those examples down here. So it's listing and showing the street typologies and saying that, you know, any new development with new streets should try and conform to those, um, should try to conform to those street types to the highest degree possible, to include multi-use paths, um, and adequate buffers from the street. Um, this is also where we put in provisions for, um, discouraging cul-de-sacs and encouraging, uh, the gridding of subdivisions, um, as they're designed in the downtown area. I don't know if we had any additional questions about, about this section here, F.
Phillip, can we go back to the parking or the, uh, you know, the parking lines and stuff? I, I noticed here, and I know this was brought up before, the ninety-degree parking, uh, degree angle parking. I think that should be eliminated, uh, because as you know, I mean, Sonora Road is kind of narrow in general and having people back out of a ninety-degree, uh, thing as opposed to a forty-five degree, um, would make that, uh, could be, could be problematic.
Okay. Yeah, ninety-degree parking is typically discouraged unless it's, you know, an extremely slow kind of lane.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, the last section here is the downtown commercial development regulation. So this is C-one revised, um, development standards. Um, we basically said that the minimum building lot area could be under an acre. So it could be, um, seven thousand square feet, which is consistent with our town center mixed-use, um, lot requirements for commercial buildings. Um, we also put in a new provision for the maximum building footprint size of fifteen thousand square feet. This was a recommendation from, um, this was a recommendation from the, the, um, the consultants for the downtown master plan, just to limit the size of buildings. If fifteen thousand square feet was used, there would be any non, there's no building that exceeds fifteen thousand square feet downtown. Um, but the current maximum building footprint size is thirty thousand, thirty thousand square feet. Um, I could see, I could see this perhaps causing some issues in terms of, uh, site flexibility, but the, the overall intent is to have smaller-looking buildings, uh, downtown as opposed to what we would otherwise permit in other commercial areas across town. I don't know what your thoughts are on that, if you think thirty thousand square feet is still appropriate, uh, or if you think we should shrink it down. Our, the, the, um, the footprint of the town hall is over fifteen thousand square feet. Um, so we just, if, i- if we got rid of that provision, we'd be allowing buildings approximately the same size as town hall to con- to continue to, to develop in downtown.
I agree. I think thirty thousand is too big if we're trying to create a walkable village-type small town.
I would agree with Melissa. Um, one question that I do have, um, the, I'll call it the red door, even though it's, uh, somebody else's building. What is the actual foot, uh, size of that building?
So I did, um, I did kind of take a look at his building, um, just as we were talking about this because as I was putting this together, in the middle of putting this together, Mr. Townsley's building unfortunately...
Thank you, yeah.
Uh, and this actually pertains pretty, pretty directly to his property. His, his building was... His, his building was, I believe, in the 13,000 square foot mark in terms of its original footprint. We could, we could make it, you know, 15,000 or 20,000 square foot. 15 was, was a number that was recommended to us by the consultant, but 20,000 square feet would also, I think, accomplish the same goal and give a little bit more flexibility. Although there's not any particular building downtown that, that exceeds 15,000 square feet, including Mr. Townsley's.
Okay, so he'd have no trouble putting up a 13,000 or 15,000 square foot building then?
Correct.
Okay, good, that would match. Now, is, is he able to bring his closer to the sidewalk when they start doing it because being part of the TCMU?
So he, if, if this ordinance changes, his property's currently zoned C1. If, if, if we change the overlay district, then he would not have to go through any kind of rezoning to town center mixed-use. He would just inherit these new setback requirements and be able to reconstruct his building without, without going through the non-conforming section of our ordinance.
Thank you, Phillip.
Yeah.
Phillip, so what about, there's one area in town where I've, I've just thought when, when doing my little, you know, thinking about what, what could go where, I think, well, you know, that's a pretty good area for something like a, an assisted living facility. Would be low-impact, it would, anyway. That's almost definitely going to be larger than a 15,000 square foot footprint, right?
I, I would agree with you on that, yes. It would limit facilities like that. A larger facility, perhaps even a large medical office, would, would probably want to build a building closer to the 30,000 square foot footprint mark. We, and they would be allowed to do so outside of downtown, but this would limit their ability to do that downtown.
But they could go up, correct, as long as their footprint wasn't more than 15?
Yeah, but you don't really want an assisted living facility to go up.
Well, we, I thought we already did something with that off Dogwood, an assisted living facility, and we did that. Am I thinking of something else? Right there by Glendale.
Talking about where the hotel was going.
But that, yeah.
I think we did smaller.
Part of that, I think, was part of his, his lot size as well because it's a pretty small lot.
It would also limit hotels as well. A hotel would want more than a 15,000 square foot footprint unless it's a, you know, a small boutique hotel. You know, most of the, most of the lot sizes downtown prevent large buildings. So, I believe if somebody wanted to come in and put in a, you know, a building that was at a 30,000 square foot footprint, it would be on a much larger property.
And it wouldn't, and it wouldn't, you there?
Yeah, I, I, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we're, we're fine.
Sorry, my, something went out, but I came back.
Good. But with these numbers that you're showing us on here, this is just going to be restricted to the downtown area. So anything that's built outside of the downtown area, then they'd have that ability to go to 30,000 square feet, correct? Is that how I understand it?
If, if we wanted to, you know, you know, remove that provision and just retain the 30,000 square foot footprint across the board, we certainly could. I, the, the properties downtown, like I was saying, they don't really lend themselves to large buildings like that. So if, if somebody wanted to build a bigger building downtown, it would, it would have to be on a large lot that could really accommodate a building like that. So, I wouldn't say that it would be entirely inappropriate to have a 30,000 square foot requirement downtown. So I think that the size of the lots would, would naturally kind of regulate, you know, an appropriately-sized building to go in.
Except that a builder could come in and buy two or three pieces and then knock everything down and put something big in. Right?
Yes, I mean, it's possible they could come in. Typically in a downtown environment, they'll want to do a little bit of a smaller building, but it's possible. That being said, I mean, the building would still need to conform to all of our architectural guidelines. The building would still need to, it would still need to, you know, address the streets that it's walkable and there's a large sidewalk. So it would still have to be a suitable building for downtown regardless. And it also opens up the ability to have perhaps a multi-tenant building that's rather large. So they would build a, a large building, but then they would suite it out and make it look more like a Main Street-type, you know, building with, you know, different facades and different, you know, suites. So, it, it's possible to have, you know, a larger building, still meet the intent.
I still like the 15. I think it's more controllable, what we get in there. And, you know, later on, we want to change it to 30, we could, right?
Well, 15 and 30 are not our only choices. I mean, like, I'm thinking of areas and, I'm not thinking of anything down the Sonora Road corridor because this reaches out to other sections. And, like, doesn't, doesn't this reach out all the way to 74?
Yes, the bound, boundary is 74.
So, we'd be saying that something out on 74 couldn't have a footprint of more than 15,000 feet?
That's pretty big, isn't it?
I don't know, like, i- if you got like a, a strip mall-type presentation, how many, how many, um, um, different businesses would be in 15,000 square feet?
15,000 square feet, it depends on the type of business. I'll give you an example, I guess, the CBS, like the pharmacy and the Dollar Tree. Those buildings are approximately 15,000 square feet. So tho, those are, those are the types of, those are the types of buildings at that size. So you could have smaller businesses, you know, with a multi-suite, you know, kind of relationship there. But, you know, it could also be a single business in 15,000 square feet.
I don't want to be the bad, bad guy and say we need big buildings, but I don't want to be the bad guy and, and limit it too small. I don't, I don't know. What do y'all think? Other input?
Linda, Gloria, anybody?
I don't really care what you say.
What do you think, Ms. Linda?
It is a hard call. Now, some, some businesses you would welcome and then some.
I know, I know.
I mean, it sounds terrible to say that, but sort of hard to just say a certain size.
Like, you know, let's say something's out there, out there on 74 and it has a sandwich shop and a, and a, I mean, something like what's in the public shopping center, three of those or four of those. What, what is that a lot, what is 15,000 square feet? Is it?
That would limit the ability for a building like that to.
No, I, I, I under, I understand. I understand that. Forget Publix, focus on the businesses on either side of Publix. That's what I'm saying. Like, how many of those would be able to fit in 15,000 square feet? Would that be three of them, four of them?
Yeah, it would probably be, it'd probably be three.
Three?
Phillip, how, how many square foot is the Goodwill building?
The Goodwill building, I think, is right at the, it's like 26,000.
And our building is right at 18, so if you imagined it built in a linear fashion as a strip mall, it's a lot of space.
I think 15's enough.
If you had a building coming in on 74 that's in this district here, would they, could you not revert back to the other ordinance on Highway 74? Like, highway.
They would get their choice.
This would only regulate buildings in the downtown district, not any, not any, not any C1 properties outside of downtown.
Well, but we just said that this would include.
Some of 74.
Some of 74.
It would affect the west side of 74, not the east side. I mean, nobody could actually be in the 74 overlay and in this overlay. And if there was a, a conflict there, you'd work out the conflict. But typically, you're looking at building size on this one and on the 74 overlay, you're looking generally at architectural standards and setbacks and things of that nature. I don't think you have a building size near 74 overlay, do you, Phillip?
No, no, that, that's just in the base C1 district.
All right. This would be a double overlay for that area that's west of 74 and south of the line.
So this would include Palmetto Road to Arrowood?
That is correct, yeah. I can pull up a map.
That's a lot of land over there.
And, and to that point, Ms. Gloria, we have, I know we have at least one, I mean, and it's just been a short conversation, we've had at least one developer of assisted living-type facilities that is interested in a property in the downtown area that, and it's big enough to facilitate that type of, that type of, of structure. But I'm afraid, you know, if you went to a, a very restrictive number, they'd have a hard time. And, and like the mayor said, those types of buildings are, operations are low-impact. So it might be something that we want to consider allowing, but then you kind of pigeonhole yourself into, it's too big for the, for the space.
And then we go back to the question, can they apply for, I'll, I'll use the word variance or some sort of a way that they can, you know, that could allow them to expand the size of that building?
Probably not, because then another business that you don't want that wants a big, and, and you don't give them a variance, they sue you and they win. That's the, that's the frustrating part of this is, is.
Can't we just do 15 and see what happens? And if we start to outgrow it, change it?
Change it.
Don't laugh at me.
I was thinking the same thing, Melissa.
All right.
I mean, the other thing is split the difference and go to 20 or something, but.
Can't we just do 15 and see what happens?
I mean, 15. I mean, I think that's logical.
And then if we have to increase later after a couple of years?
Wait and see what happens, see how many things we get.
It's harder to go the other way. It's harder to go 30 and then reduce.
Yeah, it's harder to come from 30 to 15 than go from 15 to 20 or whatever.
All right.
We got you covered.
You got my butt. For that recommendation because your consultant is saying 15 should be a good fit and they've got the background to be able to put that recommendation together, so that's logical.
I think so too.
They're smarter than I am.
Thank you, Dennis.
I'm not, I'm not slow to say that. All right, anything, go ahead, Phillip, next.
Okay. I, I didn't mean to make that contentious. It was, it was a recommendation from the consultant team, but I knew it was, it's probably going to be an important discussion. So the only, the only other things here to talk about are the setbacks. Basically made these setbacks consistent with the town center mixed-use setbacks. So maintaining a 30-foot rear yard setback, allowing a five-foot side yard setback and a maximum of a 15-foot front yard setback. So, uh, this is to encourage buildings to be closer to the street and more pedestrian-friendly. So it's just accommodating that design. And then the maximum building height was put to 40 feet, not to exceed three stories. This is consistent with, this is consistent with C1 and, and office in other areas of the town. So you can't, you can't exceed three stories total, but it allows for a little bit of extra height for architectural purposes. And then we used these kind of visual examples to reference different, different items. So this is a residential lot configuration example. This is pulled straight from the LCF. Then the different street examples, or what, what we expect certain streets to kind of look like and be designed, as well as multi-use paths. So, that's kind of the overview. This was a really kind of rough, you know, red line, you know, presentation of, of the ordinance. There's a lot, there's a lot that goes, that goes into, you know, downtown overlays and things like that. So, it had a lot of provisions in there. We just wanted to make sure we put in, you know, a little bit of, you know, everything so we could get your comments on it and see which direction to go. But I think I have, I think I have some good, some good comments to be able to revise and represent to you.
Thank you, Phillip. And I should have asked upfront, I'm sorry, you feeling okay?
Me? Oh, yes.
Okay, good.
You're looking mighty good.
And I also have a general question about the entire document. Your, your fingerprints are all over this. You know this better than, well, I do, I won't speak for others. Is there anything in here that gives you any heartburn, trepidation, anything like that? Or do you feel comfortable with the document?
So, there are some things that definitely need to be hammered out and just clarified in terms of language. On the whole, and it's certainly something that, you know, I want to sit down with legal and go through. This, this was a really rough draft, but the overall provisions, some of the, the main overall kind of provisions that, you know, are, are put in here are things that I'm fairly comfortable with. I think that there are some really good points brought up about building size. You know, there could be a particular building or people's use that comes along that we might, we might want to actually be larger. An assisted living is actually a great example. So have a little bit of, you know, trepidation about that. However, I also, you know, understand that 15,000 square foot maximum size is definitely, you know, a recommendation with a purpose, which is to limit the size of buildings downtown because we're trying to achieve a, you know, a village-style feel. It's a small-town kind of development pattern. So downtown, that, that also makes sense. So there's not like a, you know, this is an absolutely right and an absolutely wrong way of thinking about some of these different things that we want to see downtown. It's really just about what is the, what's the overall goal? And what do you think is in, you know, the best interest of the town and what we're trying to accomplish downtown? So, I, I don't, I don't think that there's anything in here that prevents or, I don't think there's anything in here that's, that's not in the best interest really of achieving what we want to achieve downtown.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I have one. On the first page under section 113-134, under, under C, facade requirements, that number two down there, did I, did I see on that first presentation that came on the screen that you could have more than two building-type materials? And this sentence says, "No more than two." Did I just misread that?
Right, yeah, so, so the, the original ordinance stipulated that there shall be no more than two. Planning Commission had asked and, or suggested that we remove that provision. Planning Commission suggested that we allow, you know, somebody to present an architectural facade with more than two building materials if they choose. So, if, if, if you guys have different thoughts on that, that.
No, I was, I was just wondering, is, is this in here under two? Is that, is that in here to stay or is that supposed to be redlined out or something? I don't know.
It's, it's currently presented to stay. The only, the only, I, I highlighted it because it was something that was part of a planning commission discussion, just because it was, was a, I think, a little larger topic. The only thing that we're looking to remove from, the only redline portion is that split face, split base block was allowed as a, as a material for accessory buildings. So I, I recommended that we not allow split base block.
So, so set me straight here. How many, how many building materials can you use on the outside?
With, with this, yeah, with this provision, it would be no more than two primary building materials. But that does not include trim and accent.
Okay, I got you. I just missed. Okay, I got you. I just miss, I just misheard and I thought it was more than that a little while ago. Thank you.
But, but, but Planning Commission asked us to consider removing that.
They did.
And did we, we, I don't recall us giving you an answer on that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I have a, a clear answer on exactly how, how you feel about that. If you think that limiting the building materials is appropriate, then I can certainly keep it in.
Does this including, does this include in like brick, um, rock, and does it include glass?
I, I don't think it would include glass as windows. It would include glass if that was intended to be some kind of other type of building material, not as part of a window.
Okay, just take, just take O'Reilly's, for example, over here. You know how they have that glass front?
Yes.
So would that, would that be considered as a building material? Because that's, that's the front of the store.
Yes, it, it could be considered a building material, and glass is actually typically regarded as like a more premium material for a building. So, um, glass would be considered appropriate, and considering that they're all windows, that would be, that would be permitted. It's, it, it's really saying, you know, if you wanted to put brick, let's just say you had on the building brick and, um, like wood siding, that you could then also use stone some, um, if you remove this provision. This provision is saying you have to choose two primary building materials, can't have.
What, what was the, what was the planning board's recommendation? What did they suggest?
Was to, was to remove that provision, to allow, to allow builders to choose as many building materials as they wanted to.
I think there's.
If they wanted.
Excuse me. I think there should be a limit, but I think it should be more than two.
Okay.
Because I, I'm thinking glass, rock, and brick. I mean, I've seen them, glass, rock, and brick, that look very nice, so I don't know. I think we should, should limit, limit it, but I don't, I think two is just.
Too restrictive.
Not doing it justice.
It doesn't include trim, it doesn't include, um, accent.
Yeah, keep that in mind.
Right.
Because they might use wood or brick as an accent.
Phillip, how are you determining what's primary and what's not?
Well, I mean, accent, accent materials are typically, um, you know, they're typically just, they're the, they're the minor, you know, they're the minor, you know, materials used on a building, so.
Decorate it up a little.
Yeah, I, I mean, what's, what's considered a primary material is really just what the, what the broad, what the, what the largest percentage of the, of the facade is, is, is being used at. So, um, you know, if, if, if they have a, if they have a, a wall and, you know, twenty-five percent of it is window, you know, forty percent of it's brick, and then, you know, the remaining percentage is, is some other material. You know, the brick would be considered the primary, because it would be, it would have the most, it would have the highest percentage.
So what I'm, what I'm trying to get at here is, there's really only one primary material in any building. If you're looking at a percentage, that's, that's why you're calling it primary. If you're saying no more than two primary, that's almost a misnomer, because there's gonna be one that's primary, because it's gonna cover more area. So it's almost as if you can put as many building materials in there as you want to, because only one of them's gonna be primary. If, if you, if you decide, you probably should define what the word "primary" means, so that people understand. We're not limiting you to building materials, we're just saying, once you cover primarily the whole outside surface of, of greater percentage, that's your primary material. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to add some flexibility there, but you probably should at least define what the word "primary" means for, for use of the builders.
Okay, yeah.
Another problem you have here is that you mentioned glass as being a premium, uh, product, but we don't have it listed.
Yeah, I've actually got it listed here.
Okay.
That one should be allowed, um, in the facade requirements.
Did you have something?
Hey, I do. Phillip, on page fourteen, under your, under your note, the Planning Commission specifically mentioned the height requirement is forty feet at street level.
Okay, yes, that was an, that was an additional comment they had, was, um, to have the maximum building height at forty feet at grade, or basically at street level, which would be to suggest that if the building was on a hill and the street, at the street level, it could be still a maximum of three stories, but it would allow them to be able to, if they built a building on a hill, they could have a basement floor, maybe a walkout basement, um, floor, that would not count towards the, the overall building height. That was one of, that was one of their recommendations. I don't know how, I don't know how y'all feel about that as well.
Are you asking if it's a requirement to be forty?
That's what it says.
Right, but it's the maximum, meaning you can't go over forty.
Okay.
It's not required to be forty, it just can't go over forty.
That reads.
It is. If you go back, it goes back.
Well, I see what it mean, I mean, over here, where it's talking about, uh, not to exceed three stories. But over here, it said that their requirement is forty feet at a street level.
I see what you.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, right.
Clarify.
Yeah.
It's not required to be forty.
That was just, that was just me typing.
Okay.
Come on, Phillip.
Okay, all right.
Not that buildings have to be forty feet, but not, uh, basically the forty-foot is still supposed to be the maximum allowance, uh, but it can certainly be less.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any thing? Phillip, we appreciate your time in, uh, uh, sitting with us and guiding us through this. And, uh, we're gonna, I don't think you're gonna have to be with us in our next meeting, are you?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Feel better.
All right, well, uh.
Thank you, and, uh, I'll, I'll be bringing this before you with some, you know, some of, you know, your comments and things. Again, I apologize, I know some of these are a little long to get through, so.
And our best to Megan, too.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Phillip.
Thanks, sir.
All right, goodbye.
All right, let me get reset. All right, uh, we gotta adjourn this meeting, don't we? We can still take, take public comments. Just to be clear, we're currently in a workshop that we started at five-thirty to deal with, uh, oh, zoning overlay and some specifics for that. And, uh, so we will adjourn this meeting and then start our meeting, uh, our actual council meeting at seven. You can still give us public comment now if you feel like it. Um, you'd have three minutes to do so. And, but, um, that's, this is not the actual council meeting, it's the workshop. So is there anyone who would like to speak for three minutes? Okay. Uh, are there any staff comments? Do we wanna get any staff comments out of the way, or do you need to save them for the?
I don't, I don't have any. I believe we have one or two for the next meeting, but I don't have any.
All right. Um, and no need for exec, or council comments? No need for executive session for this meeting? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we will reconvene at.